Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this August 14th Board of Education meeting. I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you do plan to make a public comment this evening and haven't already done so, please complete the comment card and give it to Mrs. Callard at this time. Please silence your cell phones and remove your hats as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under back indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we just roll call, please, Mrs. Callard? Haney.
Yes, President.
Hanson.
President.
Maker.
President.
Monique.
President.
Murphy.
President.
Reynerson.
President.
And Love. Present. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
Send moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First up this evening, as always, our reports, and then we'll turn things over to Mr. Sapsky first.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. This evening, I do have a couple of things to report out on. The 2324 Career Planning Initiative End of Year Review. The Career Planning EDP End of Year Review conducted by the GISC Genesee and Intercity School District. This review measured Linden's progress in implementing the countywide career planning standards, activities, and quality of EDPs for our students in grades eight through 12. Linden met and exceeded expectations. Our summer per diem for staff, we offered 11 sessions for our London Community School educators with topics including instructional technology, synergy tools, crisis intervention, hacking questions, PDL, and formative assessment, with a total of 121 participants across the 11 sessions. So, thank you to Ms. Thomas for setting that up. Another thank you to Ms. Thomas. On August 5th and 6th, our building administrators participated in the required training for teacher evaluations. Administrators from Fenton, Genesee, and Goodrich were also in attendance. Thank you to Ms. Thomas for organizing the 5D plus Raider reliability training, interopening up to other interested districts. On August 13th, yesterday, the movers returned to moving teaching, returned to Linden High School to move teaching and office materials back to their respective spaces, and teachers were on site to help unpack. Today, we did receive clearance from the state fire marshal to have non-construction staff in the building on a regular basis. Final preparations are being made to have students on August 22nd. With that, with the expected completion of Linden High School Media Center board, it is very possible that our next Board of Education meeting on September 4th will be at Linden High School in the media center. If and when this change event takes place, we will communicate that information out. And then the final thing I have is, board, I would like to invite you to the annual back-to-school kickoff and recognition breakfast on Thursday, August... Wednesday, thank you, August 20th, at Linden Middle School. I had that day wrong, too. How about on August 21st, at Linden Middle School, where we'll provide essential updates, introduce new staff members of the Linden Community School family, enjoy some great foods and friends. Breakfast will be served at 7:15, and the recognition begins at 7:45 a.m. That's all I have.
Thank you, Russ. Are there any board members with reports this evening? Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Ms. Lott. I like the rest of the board except Ms. Maker, we're able to attend the superintendent evaluation discussion that we had to have and stay current with our current tool. They made some adjustments to the tool, and that's why we needed to go there and get the updated version. Still not a tool I'm a big fan of, but it's one we gotta work with right now, so I'll try to make the best of it personally. Also attended, I went and got a chance to do my civic duty and go over and vote. I'm in Fenton Township, so I got to go over to Lake Fenton High School. And I just enjoyed the fact that when I walked down that back hallway going to the gymnasium to vote, there was just a line of plaques of all these different awards of all these different students. It was, had to be 40 plaques on that wall. And I just feel like that's a nice thing to always have there for the people of Lake Fenton to look at. And I feel like we're gonna be missing out on stuff like that in Linden because of our move to the digital environment, which when you're visiting this facility, you got a few minutes to spare, you know, there might be a digital kiosk or whatever to look at, but it's just not as easy as if you just pan the wall and see some people that you recognize and name. So, I'm disappointed without our efforts there. I think we need to shore that up. I think we need to specifically go back and target graduation classes. The fact that we went away from having a photo array of every graduate from the beginning of time, we dropped it in the 80s or the 90s, I think it was, and I just feel like that's a big loss for the community. So, I think we should try and resurrect that, quite frankly. I'd like to see us go back and fill in the gaps, quite frankly. So, these are things that I think, you know, we're coming up short. So, thank you.
All right, any other board reports, Mr. Maker?
Yes.
I'll go first, but here, we'll come back to you.
I was just gonna say, unfortunately, unable to attend the staff breakfast next week, but I did want to note, seeing some of the new staff that are coming in, especially in our professional teaching staff, some former Linden students coming back to Linden as teachers. It's just, I know a couple of them personally, and I hope that they would come back, 'cause I, you know, just my personal interaction with them and having seen them grow up, I just really love seeing that those individuals come back into Linden and carry forward their same, you know, character traits in the, you know, community field of our schools. So, please pass on the welcome to all those new staff members on my behalf.
Thank you. Mr. Monique.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Lott. My family and I got to be a part of volunteering to set up and also attend the back-to-school blast that was here at the middle school, and it was pretty darn awesome. So essentially, the community from Linden, Lake Fenton, and Fenton could come in here and get free school supplies, clothes. The entire gymnasium was filled with clothes and brand-new shoes and everything, and there was, I think, 500 gift bags with all kinds of school supplies in them. And I think I heard that there had been 600 people that signed up, and there was a line out the door. And then they had bounce houses and different things for the kids to put together, but some of the names that come, I mean, just about any organization from the community you can think of, a lot of businesses, Lions, State Bank, God's Love Foundation, Linden Presbyterian Church were part of it, and it's just really awesome. It was a reminder of kind of how much need there is and great to see so many people come together to make that a successful event. So, yeah, that was really neat. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else with a report this evening? Only a couple of things I have, but I just want to also extend a thank you to everyone for attending the training superintendent's tool. That was nice that we were able to all attend so that we don't have to bring that training in-house until we have new board members potentially coming up in January, which we would have to train them anyway. So it was nice that everybody was able to attend. It was a beautiful Tuesday evening, I think, and we could've been a million other places, but everybody made it a priority to be there, so thank you very much. And then also with regard to the welcome back next Wednesday, I will be attending and giving a message on behalf of the entire board to the staff that day as well. So if anyone else is able to join, please feel free to, that would be great. And otherwise, I will be there extending a welcome back on behalf of the board, so. All right, we will move along this evening. There are no special presentations or recognitions this evening. We don't have any administrative updates this evening, so that brings us to public comments. Mrs. Callard, I can give a couple of public comments? We do. Oh, sorry. Just as a reminder for public comments, that this is your opportunity to address the board. All comments should be directed to the board president, limited to three minutes, and if warranted, the superintendent or myself will respond on a vote in next quarter. First, we have Tara Phillips.
Tara Phillips, Linden, Michigan. Can you confirm if our school lawyers reached out and recommended we don't adopt policies 2264 and 2266 as they currently stand written and were adopted on July 17, 2024? Biden made an executive order 14021 guaranteeing an education environment free from discrimination on the basis of sex, including sexual orientation or gender identity, which was signed by Biden on March 8, 2021. I'm sure you're aware of the full details of this order under Section 2 Review Agency Actions. While executive orders have the force, while, excuse me, while executive orders have the force of law, they are subject to judicial review. The courts can declare them unconstitutional as seen in cases where executive orders have been challenged and overturned. I guess this is why the Chevron overturn makes this moment in time and this executive order extremely important. It looks as if this executive order allowed the Secretary of Education in consultation with the Attorney General to determine law. I don't see that Congress ever voted to make amendment changes. Can you confirm this and ask if Neola can provide that documentation, or does the school currently have that in its possession? I don't agree with allowing biological boys who feel they are girls to be on girls' sports teams or in locker rooms. This executive order discriminates and tells these girls that their safety is less important and chalk up the feelings of discomfort even though the biological boy claiming to be a girl is not even comfortable in their own skin. These girls are thus losing a spot on the team scholarships and are required to feel comfortable if the boy's genitals hang out in front of them in a girl's locker room. This is insane. The executive order claims to not discriminate based on sex. Meanwhile, it's discriminating against every biological girl out there. We can make a case for the boys as well with the opposite circumstances. These kids who aren't uncomfortable in their own skin need help, but discriminating against every biological girl and boy in this way to ensure their comfort and no one else's is not the solution. Shame on all those putting the agenda upon these kids who are supposed to have adults standing as the shield to defend them. Thank you.
Next up, we have Taylor Ramber.
I'm gonna probably be saying quite a bit of what she just said. Also, I wanted to know if our board had consulted with the lawyer, if it's the same lawyer that we use for the two other districts that we kind of coincide with, because I know one is handling it completely different than how our board did, and if you're aware that you guys possibly could get sued. So right now, there is 26 states that have ordered no enforcement of this. There is an election coming up in a couple months. There is going to probably be a Supreme Court case when they come back in October or November about this. Right now, there's a federal injunction on this with a couple groups. I'm gonna email you guys the lawsuit, that was just one. They include the Moms for Liberty, it's mostly in Pennsylvania schools, and then any other people who sign on to Moms for Liberty, it affects the independent schools, so not the whole district. But if you have a mother that's part of this group, that they just won this lawsuit, I think on July 2nd, say it's at Hyatt, and one's in this high school, and you enforce this, you could be sued. So, yeah, I think you guys do need to talk to some more lawyers and maybe amend this because it's two months away. Also, for selected services system, when our kids graduate, our sons from high school, you're automatically put into the draft. I noticed, because I received a letter for my son. I was upset, so I called, and they said, "It doesn't matter, you have to do the draft." I said, "Well, that's cool, we'll just transgender, we're transgender, we'll be a woman, because you can't draft women, right?" And she said, "No, that's not how it works. Unless Congress changes the law, the draft goes on biological men on your birth certificate." Not the DOD. I asked, "What can't the DOD do, just like Title IX did with their education department?" No. Congress makes the laws. Congress interprets the laws. So same thing with the Chevron case, that was just one in Supreme Court. Department of Education doesn't get to rewrite the laws. So I think that this board needs to contact some attorneys in case, just to make sure you're not setting yourself up for a lawsuit from one parent. I have actually talked to a few parents that did not know what was happening, and they said they will pull their kids. I said, "Well, where are you gonna put them? Online school, homeschool, or Lake Fenton?" Because Lake Fenton's doing this way better than we are. That's embarrassing. So I said, "Well, I don't know if our board knows the laws, if the lawyer taught to them," or because they're put in a hard situation between what the Michigan School Board of Education is telling them, what the state's telling them, but you guys need to look at this further. Just when the COVID vaccines mandates were coming out, we warned you guys, it's gonna be lawsuits. Don't push us on the teachers yet, let them have a choice. I really think that this board and our superintendent needs to call the lawyers, especially one with the other two districts that you guys work with, to see why we passed this so quickly. And there are many parents who are upset.
Thank you. And next up is Shelley Urban.
I am agree with everything they said, that was what I was coming for. I'm sorry you're not good at public speaking. I agree 100% with what they said, and also I wanted to bring up the fact that I wanted to know if you guys did see a lawyer, because I heard the same thing, that you guys are misrepresented. This brought to my attention in the last board meeting that I wasn't aware of, is that I'm not who's sure whose voice it was, it was on recording, that said, "Well, we have to pass it, because it's the law. It's the law, and we're gonna pass it." And you didn't even read about it, you didn't tell anybody about it, you didn't discuss it, nothing. But this, this is all based on discrimination, sexual discrimination. So if you allow a biological male in a little girl's bathroom, that is sexual discrimination, 100%, and you cannot take it back. So I would like all of you to get a lawyer, read every single thing about it, and get it interpreted, because what you're doing, you're not helping these supposed boys or girls or whatever they are, you're hurting little girls and little boys, because this does not concern these little kids. They don't need to know about all this stuff. This should be addressed in high school, not elementary school. I have five children in this school district. I have one child and four grandchildren, and the youngest is a granddaughter. And five, I am not gonna allow some male pervert teacher to come into the bathroom because he says he's a girl and molest my granddaughter. So I agree, all of you need to reread this, use your brain, get a lawyer, and read this word for word, because it's not what they're telling you. Now, don't let them tell you federal funding. There is no federal funding. I'm a taxpayer. We're all taxpayers. We pay for everything. The government pays for nothing. We need to protect our children and stuff, letting this go on. It's ridiculous. There is a male and a female. Anything else is in your head. That it should not be allowed for sports, for anything. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
All right, we will move along this evening to our consent agenda, which includes minutes from our meeting on July 17, invoices from the month of July, and the personnel summary sheet. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Send moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item, we have a couple of action items this evening, and the first up is reinstatement of LHS Student A for the start of the 2024-25 school year. As you guys are aware, in Complaints and Board Policy 5610.01, the reinstatement committee convened on August 8 to consider the reinstatement of Student A, LHS ninth-grade student, and it is a recommendation of the reinstatement committee to conditionally reinstate Student A effective August 15. It is the administrative recommendation to approve the reinstatement for the start of the school year as recommended by the reinstatement committee. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone have any comments on this? Questions? All of that was probably handled with the reinstatement committee. Thank you to the board members that attended that on behalf of the board, and thank you to the administrators that helped that as well. So seeing no questions or comments, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Second up is the GCC ARD, or I think we call it the G-CAR lease agreement and interagency agreement for July 1, 2024 through June 3, 2025. Everybody had this information to review ahead of time. As always, it is the administrative recommendation to approve the G-CAR lease agreement and interagency agreement as presented. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Sapsky? Do you have anything you would like to add to this beyond what we've seen, or?
No, I mean, you guys had everything in front of you, nothing's really changed, other than the price for the rental and the in-kind service that we provide back, which equals out. Last year was $1,600 because the intent was for them to use the modular, plus the classroom inside of Argentine. This year, they're just using the modular. That's why it was cut in half.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? All right, seeing none. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Up next is to approve Brooke Hanson's attendance at MASB events, and there are several on here to include the annual leadership conference in October for her attendance and accommodations, and then several CBA classes to go along with this. This is a great opportunity for any board member, but at this particular vote, Brooke has asked to attend these events, so thank you, Brooke. So it is the administrative recommendation to approve Brooke Hanson's attendance at the MASB events as she requested. Do I have a motion?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. I don't know if there's any, can you want to say, Brooke, or anybody else wants to respond to this, but I, again, as always, just thank you for attending all these events. You're always good about sharing information back with the group after you've attended, and your dedication to attending many of these events has been much appreciated, so. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate Ms. Hanson's efforts in this area. Your cost just keeps creeping up on these sessions a little bit every year, it seems like, so I'm glad you haven't known now, it would be cheaper than they should, so.
Well, remember, we get reimbursed, too, for most of these classes, up to $100.
Oh, okay. That's great. Okay, very good.
So that it's a win-win-win, which is good, yeah.
Who pays reimbursement?
I think it's just through MASB. Who pays the reimbursement? MASB does. Up to $100 for an event, so we'll get the reimbursement for, I believe, up to 100 for the conference fee, and then probably reimburse for each of these individual events.
If one is one, it's one.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's good that they're trying to support districts to support their board members to do this, so. And I guess, kind of off-topic, but on topic, Ms. Reynerson is the newest board member. If you're ever interested in attending any of these, Brooke can provide a lot of information, I could provide some information, and Mrs. Callard can always help, you know, get it on the agenda if you're interested in attending for the next board meeting. We just, kind of, we go through, we always approve it, so we know that, you know, board members are attending, plus there is a small cost associated for traffic and such, so. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Up next is the Argentine Township of Argentine Linden Community Schools School Resource Officer Agreement. And again, this is a agreement that comes up for annual review by the board. Everybody's had an opportunity to look at it. Doesn't appear that there are any changes from last year, but it is the administrative recommendation to approve the Township of Argentine Linden Community Schools School Resource Officer agreement as presented. Do I have a motion?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or anything additional for Mr. Sapsky?
No, I think you guys have heard from me, support the SRO program that we've had, not only with Argentine, but Linden in this regards to Argentine, it's been, I don't know, 10, 12 years. And this year, the price, $37,000, is the same as it was last year. And remember, we did have a little uptick last year, and that was due to some of the resources or supplies, i.e. the police crews that they were using.
Any, yes, Ms. Haney?
Just as a point noted, I know I brought this up in the past. My only, obviously, I understand the need for SRO support, and I just take exception with number two on the contract itself, where we really should have more control over too much, too much power of choices in the hands of essentially the vendor person. I think we should be actively involved in the interview process and the placement. If somebody is provided to us that is just not a good fit, we really don't have, in my opinion, the contract doesn't work, that we can push forward with replacement, things of that nature. I'd just would like to see number two changed to give us a little bit more autonomy and provide us with an opportunity to essentially screen and be at least a part of the selection process of who's in our building, so. That's it.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I'm confident in the township's ability to assign corporate staff, so it doesn't scare me too much. I'd just like to thank the township for bringing us a service, especially the same price as last year. It seems like everything going up, and the side of something that doesn't is refreshing. So, thank you, Argentine Township, for your efforts.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we do have one discussion item this evening, and that is regarding the MASB dime anniversary feedback program. And Mr. Sapsky mentioned this at our last meeting, and since then, he and I have had a chance to talk a little bit about this, everyone should've gotten an email with this information. Essentially, MASB is offering up to $750 for every school board in Michigan to take advantage of some resources, some training on their dime, up to $750. And there's a variety of different things to qualify for this. Everybody does have a list of them. I think Mr. Sapsky even included a link here in our meeting notes, so you can take a look at that. So I guess we're just wanting to get feedback, if anyone has any particular ideas on how you'd like to see us as a board utilize that offer. I have a couple of ideas of my own, but I want to see if others have ideas first.
I just...
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, I just feel like whatever we do, we should take advantage of the full set of that, depending on which class that we want to attend to, I think we should totally utilize the full set of that.
I agree, yes. Ms. Hanson?
I know, I already told you, my feelings, I think, just maybe having MSA become here for a workshop on the student discipline process for not only the board, but also our administrators would be really beneficial.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a good idea. There's always a lot shifting around in that area, and we want to make sure that we're following all the processes properly and legally, so I think that's a good idea, to do a board workshop, and if others have an idea for a board workshop, we can look into that. Another idea I had was to reserve the funding potentially, I guess, any way you slice your dice, that we've got, you know, one board member now, potentially another new board member coming on in January, so we could put the money towards helping them do the CBA 101 or other coursework, because it is in our board policy to, you know, recommend that board members take at least the CBA 101 and Level 1 training, so we could have that available for new board members as well. But we've, our district and our board has been supportive of anyone wanting to take advantage of these educational resources anyhow, so it's not like we're not going to be able to have them do that if we don't spend it that way. So it might be a better use of our funding to have something where everyone is impacted, as Ms. Hanson suggested, so. Yeah, Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm looking at all the, all at once.
I just want to make sure that with the workshops we're getting, that we consider the legal workshop, given all the concerns that they expressed tonight, I think this might help.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
To move the legal side.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Hanson, did you have a response to that?
Oh, yeah, so they just did a legal workshop last year, not that I attended, and they addressed all of those, those laws also. So, I mean, they do whatever you're back to school, overall, court cases, all legislation, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and Ms. Hanson, I'm sure can share some of that information back with board members if we're interested, maybe even a presentation, because a lot of times, they record or present things, and there's probably some things she can share back with us as well, yeah.
It was recorded, so I can share the recording with everyone.
But it's a good idea, Mr. Murphy, I mean, and what we should do probably is just get ideas, you know, on what type of workshop we want to do, anybody who's got a suggestion, and then just vote on it, you know, maybe at the next meeting, so we can kind of get it on the calendar for the... I think we just have to use it by June 30th or something of 2025, so we have like the whole school year to use the 750, so. I'm, Mr. Murphy, you had time.
No, that's good, yeah. I was just looking at some of the courses here, that total 750 that could be for the whole board, but I think that we're in pretty good shape for some of them, especially if you consider strategic planning and, you know, maybe even, I think we do labor relations pretty well here, so. But, yeah, maybe the, I like the idea of maybe saving the money for newer board members or even doing an in-board workshop, so, yeah, I could get on board with either of those. Yeah, thanks.
Good, thank you. Mr. Maker, do you have, anybody else have ideas? Mr. Sapsky, do you have other ideas on this?
No, I mean, I think some things you gotta talk about, whether it be a whole group workshop, definitely support that. The more information we gather as a board, the more effective we become.
Right. All right, well, maybe we'll just throw a couple of ideas down, or, you know, if somebody's got an idea, send an email to Ross or myself, and we'll get it on the agenda, we can vote on it, just so we're all on the same page and go from there, so. All right, we do have a closed session this evening, so I do need a motion to move to closed session per Section 8K, Security Planning and Threats of the Open Meetings Act. So do I have a motion?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to move to closed session per meeting, per Section 8K of the Security Planning and Threats of the Open Meetings Act at 6:29 PM. All of those in favor? Aye. Oh, roll call vote, sorry, you wrote that right on here. Haney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Monique?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Luck, myself? Yes. I probably did do a roll call, couldn't I? That's all right. We have, we don't have to, we don't have to do many roll calls for these things, but I guess with this one being the safety and security, that's what it required, yes, so. At this time, we move to closed session, so we're going to have to ask members of the public to exit the room. You're welcome to stay when we move back into open session, but there will be no vote this evening. It will just be adjourning after the closed session, but you're welcome to come back once we open the doors again.